Programming on WCS TV Channel 180 is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
presiding. Please keep all cell phones off or on vibrator phones. Keep all moving to the minimum. Please remain standing for our word of prayer and our pledge of play.
We are pleased tonight to have Evangelist Ben Bailey, who is the minister at Central Church of Christ, say our opening prayer and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Our Father in heaven, we approach your throne of grace, thankful for this day of life and for the many blessings that you give us. Father, we're thankful for your love, your mercy, and your grace. And especially, Father, we pray at this time that you will bless this meeting. We're thankful for each person who's here, who's concerned about the business of this county. And Lord, we pray that patience, that good-heartedness, and that the Spirit of Christ will be that which controls our thoughts and that everything we say and do will benefit the citizens of this county. And Father, we just want to thank you for all that you do for us. Please keep us safe. And Father, more than anything, we thank you for Jesus and the hope of heaven. We love you and thank you for first loving us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Bailey. So, Lord, I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did you please call her over, Lisa?
Terry Bell.
Here.
Morris Bond.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Wayne Copeland.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Linda Jones.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-two present.
Twenty-two present. Chairman, we did entertain a motion to adopt the docket. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second. Second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to make a motion to amend the docket with Budget Amendment GF-FY-1516-3, which is a budget amendment for the Health Department, a tobacco grant that come in after our packet come out.
I have a motion as a second. Second by Commissioner Ken Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. We're back on the main docket as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise.
Mr. Chairman?
That will be item 12A. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we also amend the agenda to make an amendment for Resolution Number 142016. That's been presented to you and it's on everyone's desk.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion. That's on the judicial commissioners, right? Okay. I have a motion as a second. Second by Commissioner Shane Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Okay, now we're back on the main motion as agenda. And that would be, that'll stay as the same item as before. I think that is item eight. Yeah, it's item eight. Okay, a motion to approve the docket as amended with the, with the, what, your motion there, it was a, yeah, budget amendment and also on the judicial commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm sure all of you have received your minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
One to approve.
Have a motion to approve and dispensive reading of the minutes. Is there a second? All, motion by Tommy Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. We'll go into the elected officials, department reports. And first on the list is Finance, Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them at this time.
Motion by Commissioner Carl E. Bolden, second. Second by Commissioner Teddy Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Animal Control and Adoption Center, Ms. Petrie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I believe you have a copy of my quarterly report. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire, second. By Commissioner Teddy Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Next is County Welfare Commissioner Michael Martin. Ladies and gentlemen, have a copy of my report. Anybody have any question? Got motion by Commissioner Teddy Boyd, second. Second by Commissioner David Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Next, Health Department, Ms. Fox.
Good evening. You should have a copy of my report. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ruble, second. By Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
IDB Quarterly Report, Don Alexander.
Good evening, members of the commission. If I can answer any questions about my report, be glad to do so.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second. Second by Commissioner Kenny Roberts. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Planting Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the report of the Planting Commission's first quarter of the calendar year. If there's any questions you have, I'll try to answer or get you an answer.
I have a motion, second. Second by Carl E. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. We'll go into our committee reports. First on the list, Budget and Finance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just love to remind the chairman that we need to be working on our budgets for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second, Buildings and Grounds, Carl E. Bolden.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Building grounds has nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic and Agricultural Development, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, education has nothing to report.
Thank you. Financial Management, Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial management has nothing to report at this time.
Health and Welfare, Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health and Welfare have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Highway and Bridge Commission, Commissioner Randy England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, the Highway and Bridge, well, only thing we have a report on is that mowing season is right up here on us. So, you'll be seeing our equipment out and getting ready to mow. So, we're getting started with that. We hadn't started as of today, but it's coming in the next few days. Also, just be looking in the papers for our surplus auction. That'll be coming up pretty soon.
Thank you, Commissioner. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety Committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Our Special Committee reports. County Corrections Partnership Committee, Commissioner Bond.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, County Correction Partnership Committee has nothing to report.
Thank you. Redistricting, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Redistricting, we have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. We will go into our new business and, with us, with 23 members, it only takes 12 instead of 13 to be a majority, since we've got one that's resigned. So, 12 would be a majority tonight. Item one, Commissioner Michael Martin.
This is original, Resolution Number 7216. This resolution is authorizing the application for a litter and trash collection grant from Tennessee Department of Transportation and authorize the exception of sale grant. What this grant is, is a man in a truck that go around and pick up trash on the side of the road. And we've been having that grant for about 20 years now. So, move.
Second, second by Commissioner Tommy Savage. Anybody, everybody understand the motion?
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Item number two, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 8-2016. A resolution declaring the intent of Warren County, Tennessee, to reimburse itself for certain expenditures with the proceeds of bonds, notes, and or loans to be issued by the county. The Safety Committee met on April the 4th to consider a resolution that provides for the county to reimburse itself for preliminary expenses related to a proposed jail expansion project if and when such project should be approved. The jail expansion project may become necessary to alleviate continued overcrowding issues at the current facility, which, if not addressed, could result in the state's intervention. Resolution Number 8-2016 does not commit the county to an expansion project. However, it does signify to the State Department of Corrections that Warren County is taking the issue seriously. The Safety Committee voted four to one to pass this on to the full commission. Budget, Finance, and Financial Management passes this also. I so move.
Does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Carl E. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Item three, Commissioner Teddy Boyd.
Item three is Resolution Number 92016, a resolution adopted by Warren County, Tennessee Emergency Medical Service Personnel Policy Manual. The Safety Committee met on April the 4th to consider adopting a personal policy manual for Warren County EMS. The committee, the committee voted five to zero to recommend to the full commission approval, adoption of the Warren County, Tennessee Emergency Service Person Policy Manual. And I put that in reserve of motion.
Anybody, everybody understand the motion? Second by Commissioner Lee. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Item four, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution Number 10-2016. It's a resolution to offer the opportunity of employment and health insurance coverage to employees defined as in full-time status under the Patient Protection and Affordable Act for Warren County, Tennessee. The Policy and Personnel Committee met on April the 4th to consider a resolution necessary to comply with health insurance coverage enrollment opportunities under the Affordable Care Act. This resolution ensures that all Warren County employees who qualify as having full-time status as defined in the Affordable Act will be offered the opportunity to enroll in county insurance plan. Policy and Personnel Committee voted four to zero to recommend this resolution, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Does everybody understand the motion? Second, second by Commissioner Morris Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Item five, Commissioner Randy England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number five is Resolution Number 112016, a resolution authorizing Warren County to initiate condemnation, contamination, I can't say it now, combination litigation in order to begin construction on a bridge on Sheville Highway in Warren County, Tennessee. The Highway and Bridge Committee met on March 10th to consider initiating combination proceedings for a portion of the land necessary to complete the bridge replacement project on Old Sheville Road near the Coffey County line. The bridge has been assessed by the state of Tennessee as being in poor condition, and efforts to obtain the land needed to complete the project have been unsuccessful. The committee, we voted unanimously to authorize a county attorney to initiate the appropriate action, and I so move.
Everybody understand the motion? Second, second, second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
No.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-one, yes, one no.
Motion passes twenty-one to one. Item six, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 12-2016, a resolution of the governing body of Warren County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, payment of interest-bearing capital outlay notes not to exceed $125,000 for the purpose of purchasing vehicles and related equipment for Warren County Sheriff's Department. We've done pass this when we passed our budget, but since we haven't used it after the first of the year, the state requires we pass it again. And it's been through Budget and Finance, and I so move.
Everybody understand the motion? Second by Commissioner David Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Item seven, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 13-2016, a resolution of the governing body of Warren County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing capital outlay notes not to exceed $105,500 for the purpose of providing funds for various costs associated with the Warren County Health Department upgrade. And this is just like the last one we done. We passed our budget, but since we hadn't used it till after the first year, we have to reaffirm it. And I think it come in under budget substantially.
Around $65,000 with architect fee and everything.
So, I so move.
Everybody understand the motion? Second by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Item eight is Commissioner Ken Martin. This is the item that was, we had to amend the docket for.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 142016, a resolution to establish policies and procedures for judicial commissioners' positions appointed by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee. And this will be the amended addition the Policy and Personnel Committee met on April the 4th to consider and establish a personnel policy for Warren County judicial commissioners. The committee voted four oh to recommend the adoption of these policies as set forth in the resolution. The only difference in amendment was in your package and the one that was on the table is highlighted the last paragraph on each one, and I so move.
Everybody understand the motion? Motion by Commissioner Ken Martin, second. By Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I would like to speak to it. First, I'd like to say I appreciate what the Policy and Personnel Committee has done by bringing up this policy and these, the rules, because as a county commissioner who in the past has actually been arrested on an abortion of a warrant that was written without, it was actually deemed unlawful by the instructor of the judicial commissioner. When I came before the Policy and Personnel Committee about four years ago, they couldn't answer any of my questions. So, I am very pleased that now that I'm in office, the Policy and Personnel Committee has taken it upon themselves to do this. And I appreciate the judicial commissioners for what they do, because I think we have a really good group now. And I think they endeavor to do a good job and do it accurately and accountable to the people. So, thank you very much, Policy and Personnel Committee.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
I have one question. Will this affect the budget or will it remain the same going to three full-time?
It will. Thanks. And I'd like to ask Linda to address that if you would, please.
It will affect the next budget because the retirement will increase on those two additional full-time or three additional full-time. It's going to run approximately $5,000 per employee to go full-time. That includes all the benefits, retirement, life insurance, and the offer of insurance coverage.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Item nine, you all, all of you have your letter there that Ms. Yancey sent me that she is resigning to go to North Carolina. And this position, it will be elected, be on the ballot in August. But if any commissioner would like to nominate someone next month, it could be on the floor. So, but it'd only be for three months is what it'd be for. Anybody got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I need a motion to accept her, a motion by Teddy Boyd, second. Second by Blaine Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed also. Motion passes. Sorry, thank you. Item 10, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The Policy and Personnel Committee met on April the 4th to consider the appointment of the Board of Equalization. The board is composed of five members, four county appointees and one city appointment. As set forth in Resolution Number 24-2013, county members on the board may serve for a total of two consecutive year terms. One member of the board, Mr. Randall Hitchcock, has asked not to be reconsidered for reappointment due to health reasons or issues. Policy and Personnel voted four oh to recommend the appointment of Carl Wilson for the second year term and reappointment of Mike Elam, Mike Witherspoon, and A.C. Witt, Jr., for their third second-year terms. Will expire, their terms to expire in April 2018, and I so move again, Mr. Chairman.
Second, have a motion as second. Second by Commissioner Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Item 11, the Planting Commission, they recommended Keith Bolden and Randall Gillum to go back on and whoever they recommend, that's who I put back on there. So, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Item twelve, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Two Thousand and Fourteen Tax Agreement. Warren County trustee Darlene Bryan has submitted the Two Thousand and Fourteen Tax Agreement for consideration and approval by the full commission.